It is Wednesday, July 9th, and we are beginning our study session item. And I believe that we have representatives from Cherry Creek School District here to talk about a new school. Who is our presenter today, please?
I think Connor is gonna do the staff part, and then the school will follow that, if that works.
Awesome. And we will welcome our new commissioner a little bit later in the meeting. Let's go ahead and have Connor lead us off.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hogan. Connor Bailey here is, I'm actually one of the senior planners on the current planning staff. Is this is actually my first time that I'm seeing you in this capacity for Planning Commission. I've been here about, I guess, nine months or so. So this is actually my first Planning Commission with you all. So excited to present this project. So let me pull up the presentation here. Okay, I want to double check. Everyone's able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, for tonight, I will be presenting the Cherry Creek School District Loretto Middle School Project. Moving into the requests, the applicant is requesting an advisory site plan for a proposed middle school replacement project. The existing middle school is owned by the Cherry Creek School District, which has a current zoning of mixed-use office slash institutional, which is the MU dash OI, and has a place type of the established neighborhood. Moving into the vicinity map, the subject site is located within Ward 5 of the City of Aurora. At a larger view, as seen on the left, the subject site is located southeast of the intersection between the major arterials of South Chambers Road and East Smoky Hill Road. More specifically, as seen on the right, the subject site is located south of the intersection between East Smoky Hill Road and South Loretto Street. Please note that the subject site is located on the border between the City of Aurora and the City of Centennial on the south. Moving into the aerial map, per the aerial of March of this year, you can see the existing conditions for the existing Loretto Middle School. The scope of the advisory site plan is just for the existing middle school, and there are no modifications being proposed to the existing Smoky Hill High School. Historically, the subject site has been improved as a middle school since 1973. As seen in the aerial, the two-story school building is located internally to the site with both the bus drop-off and the car pickup and drop-off located together along South Loretto Street. And a track and field is located on the eastern side of the site. The area immediately north of the proposed development is the tennis courts and parking associated with the Smoky Hill High School. The surrounding area to the northwest and south is single-family residential, with the north and the west being the Shenandoah Neighborhood, while the south being the Hilltop Neighborhood, which is within the City of Centennial. The adjacent properties to the east are the school play fields that are associated with the Smoky Hill High School. As previously mentioned, the subject site has a zoning designation of mixed-use office slash institutional, the MU dash OI. The northern adjacent Smoky Hill High School shares the same zoning designation of the MU dash OI. The single-family residential neighborhood to the north and west has a zoning designation of low-density, single-family residential district, which is the R1. And then the single-family residential to the south is located within the City of Centennial and has a zoning district of neighborhood conservation, 6,000 square feet minimum, or as they abbreviate as NC6. As seen here in these site photos, which were taken July 6th of this year, you can see the western facade of the existing middle school building that faces South Loretto Street. As seen in more of these site photos, which this one is taken from South Loretto Street and at the north staff parking area, you can see the existing improvements between the building and the right-of-way of South Loretto Street. The combination of the bus drop-off and car pickup and drop-off area is seen on the right side of this picture, as you see here with the cursor. Moving forward with additional site photos, you can see here the existing track and field for the existing middle school. This is the proposed area where the new middle school building will be built and completed. In these site photos, you can see the existing conditions along this southern property line, which includes the swale as seen here on the picture on the left. The existing swale will remain on the proposed site plan. The proposed new middle school building will be located north of this existing swale. So moving on into the actual proposed site plan, which is shown here. The project proposes a new two-story school building along the east side of the site, where the existing track and field used to be. Two surface parking areas in the center of the property and a track and sports field along the west side of the site that fronts South Loretto Street. The new middle school building will have a total gross building square footage of 155,000 square feet. Please note that the new middle school building will be constructed on the existing playing fields while the existing building remains open during the school year. After the new school opens, the existing school will be demolished. The two parking areas contain up to 186 parking spaces, which are both accessed from South Loretto Street. The parking to the north of the site provides a separate internal bus drop-off area, while the central parking area provides internal vehicle circulation for parent pickup and drop-off. The proposed development provides a soft-play area at the southeast corner of the school building and a hardscape play area at the east side of the building. A central courtyard is provided to the west of the school building, which connects both the bus drop-off and the car pickup and drop-off areas. Moving forward, as you see here, these are the proposed architectural elevations for the new middle school building. You'll see that the western elevation, the elevation facing South Loretto Street is seen on the top. The east elevation, the elevation that will be facing the play fields for Smoky Hill High School are seen in the middle. And then the bottom elevation shows the southern elevation that will be facing the southern adjacent single-family residential. The elevations do note that some of the materials include brick veneer and metal panels. Just wanted to note that. Staff wanted to touch upon the community response to the proposed middle school replacement project. Per the memorandum of understanding, the school agreement with Cherry Creek School District, public notice to adjacent property owners is the responsibility of the Cherry Creek School District. The city has received comments from adjacent property owners wherein they had concerns over building setbacks, buffering, vehicle circulation for the new middle school building. The applicant held a community meeting on April 9th of this year, 2025, and then further, the applicant met again with neighbors on June 24th of this year, 2025, wherein they walked the property together. The applicant is addressing the following items with their design based on community input, which includes security cameras, operable windows, and landscaping to help relieve some of the neighbors' concerns. The applicant has indicated that they are continuing to communicate with the neighbors to address any additional responses. So during the initial advisory review, three main items were discussed for the proposed advisory site plan. The first being that the coordination of the pedestrian connectivity for the subject site. Planning stressed that the applicant provide pedestrian connections at both the northern and southeastern portions of the subject site. For the northern portion, planning discussed providing additional pedestrian connection with the northern tennis courts to promote pedestrian connectivity with the northern Smoky Hill High School. Also, planning discussed that the pedestrian connection to the southern trail, located at the southeast portion of the subject site, be clearly delineated. Second, the City of Aurora Civil Engineering Department coordinated with the applicant regarding a detached sidewalk, which would run along South Loretto Street, which when the design of the sidewalk was discussed and will be provided at the time of civil plans. Third, the City of Aurora Traffic Engineering Department coordinated with the applicant that a traffic impact study be revised, which will be provided at the time of civil plans as well. In addition, traffic engineering is coordinating with the applicant regarding a possible traffic signal at the proposed southern access point. Moving forward onto the approval criteria for the advisory site plan application, I do want to please note that all planning comments are advisory in relation to the criteria of section 146-5 dot 4 dot 3 dot B dot 2 dot C of the Unified Development Code. The proposed advisory site plan complies with the applicable standards in this UDO. It complies with other adopted city regulations. It complies with any approved master plan that includes the property and complies with any conditions specifically applied to the development of the property by the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council in a prior decision affecting the property. With that, based on the review of the proposed advisory site plan and the approval criteria, staff finds that the Cherry Creek School District Loretto Middle School Project to be generally consistent with the UDO development standards and external impacts have been appropriately mitigated. With that, staff advises that the application may proceed with the next steps in the advisory review process and that the Planning Commission does not need to request a meeting with the Board of Education as outlined in statutes 22-32-124 of the Colorado Revised State Statutes. That concludes staff's presentation. I am happy to answer any questions if there are any. If not, we can move forward to the applicant's presentation. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Bailey, good job, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you so much.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Banker?
Just curious, what is the projected completion date for this?
Is I, I can let the applicant speak.
All right, thank you.
The building will be completed in May of 2027 for the students to occupy in fall of 2027. And during those summer months, we will be demoing the existing building and setting up the site for the track and also the bus loop and the parking. As far as the schedule goes, we will be completing all of the planting for spring of 2028. So we'll be finished with all the heavy construction fall of 2027, but we will be holding off on the plants until it's a better time to actually plant items. So spring of 2028, it will be completed, full completion.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Audra, I'm assuming that you will be giving a brief presentation, but if you would be so kind as to state your full name, the association or you are associated with other than the district. And if you are ready, please go forward.
Of course. So my name is Audra Johnson. I work with CBRE, and I am the owner's representative for Cherry Creek School District. The gentleman who typically would be on from Cherry Creek is actually climbing Mount Kilimanjaro, so he could not attend tonight. So, but I honestly, I think I'd prefer this meeting over climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. Okay, so Loretto Middle School, this is the second oldest school in the Cherry Creek School District. As Connor mentioned, it was constructed and completed in 1974, and it's aged out of its useful life in terms of meeting programmatic and students' needs of today. So the new school will provide brighter, flexible, and innovative learning spaces to improve traffic flow and pedestrian safety around the school. This project was approved by voters as part of the November 2024 bond measure. Now, I know Connor brought up Smoky Hill. Smoky Hill is also on this property as well. We wanted to make sure that we were making the right decisions with planning, so we did a master planning study, spring of 2024, to make sure we were not only considering Loretto Middle School, but also Smoky Hill High School. So we do have a master plan of the site, and we are hoping in the 2028 bond, we will be looking to rebuild Smoky Hill High School. So we have, there are reasons that the school is in the location, and it's based on the master plan. As mentioned, we've had multiple meetings with community groups. We did have a community meeting, April 9th, specifically to address the neighbors. And then there were some concerns from the neighbors. We met with them separately on the 24th of June to discuss all of their comments. We've been trying to take their comments into consideration and addressing some of the items that are possible. We are continuing to follow up with the neighbors. We actually got an email today regarding a follow-up, so we are in discussion with them. And just as far as construction goes, just to give you another look at timelines. So the new school will officially begin construction September of 2025. That's really for clearing and grubbing the site. We will break ground in October of 2025 for completion in May of 2027. As mentioned, we will complete demolition of the existing school over the summer of 2027 and start our construction of the track and field and also the bus drop-off and parking fall of 2027. And then we will be putting in all of the plantings in spring of 2028. The architects and the civil engineer, they are on the call. We do have a presentation that we wanted to provide, just to give you a little more background to Loretto Middle School. So Connor, I don't know if you have that presentation, if you could pull that up? Or if Reagan or Ashley?
I should be able to pull it up, if it's the one that was sent from this morning.
Yes.
One second.
Thank you. While they're doing that, Reagan and Ashley, would you mind introducing yourself to this, the group?
Sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Reagan Farrar. I'm an associate principal at Ford Copeland Macht, which is the architecture firm, working with the school district for the design of this project. I'm also the project manager, which is the direct contact with CBRE and the school district as well. Ashley, if you want to go ahead. Ashley might be having microphone problems, but she is working with me. She's our project architect and is responsible for a lot of our documentation in coordination with our consultants and with CBRE as well. So we thought we'd lead off with what we think is a pretty picture for you all to see. Connor did a great job of showing the planning documents earlier, which, you know, may not show quite as much of what you may see from a street review. So we're leading off here with a rendering of what you would see as you get dropped off at the school. This would be the new entry here in the plaza that Connor had discussed. So it's a nice gathering place where the parent drop-off area and the bus loop area combine for the students to be able to gather before entering in the mornings and a nice place to gather after school, as well as they're waiting to either board the buses or find their parent or whoever would be picking them up. As I mentioned, this is the main entry. Admin is off on the left side, where you see that group of people huddled. They have direct sightlines to approaching visitors and students. As you would approach the building, there would be a phone, a video phone to dial to gain access to the building. And then immediately off to the right of those main entry doors is the large double-height library space, where very open from the outside, bringing in a lot of natural light. One of the design themes we were really going for on this project was connecting to nature and just making this a comfortable new building for the neighborhood. You know, it's a very, a lot of landscape and housing in this area, and we were trying to tie it in with some of those themes. We do have glue lamp beams and some wood paneling throughout, along with some natural brick colors and some metal panel that is also a wood look panel. If you wouldn't mind going to the next image, unless there are any questions on that. I was also not fully sure what Connor would be going through, so this is a little redundant from his description. It was just an overall site plan, and as you can see, there really wasn't a lot of room to work on this particular site for the new building with the intent of the students still having to be in school for this upcoming year when construction is taking place. So that did mean that we had to fit the new school basically on that existing track space to maintain full access in and around the existing building. Go ahead, next one, please. These are also a little redundant from what Connor had shown, but you can see the footprint on the right with the new visitor parking and drop-off between the building and the new track, and then the separate bus loop on the north that has its own access off of Loretto Street. Currently, as was mentioned, bus and parents enter on the South Drive and are constantly battling each other for in and out of the site, which makes for dangerous pickup and drop-off. So this has a completely separate drive lane for parents and for the buses. And then we do have a closed-off loop around the building that is only accessible for the fire department and for district maintenance, if necessary. We can probably move to the next one. This is actually basically the same that we were just looking at, just has the grading. The building will be sitting more or less on the current elevation that the practice field, track and field is currently on. And obviously, trying to promote positive drainage away from the building and the track. And you can see it's pretty steep coming off of Loretto Street. So there will be some usage of some site walls to help retain some of that coming off the road there. Next, please. Actually, let's just keep clicking, I guess. These are pretty redundant. This is a preliminary planting plan, little hard to see here. But you can tell at the south, we do have a much bigger water quality pond. One of the big concerns from the neighbors that they currently have is when there are big weather events, a lot of that rain actually travels south and under their backyard fence and into their backyard. So this pond will meet current standards for large events and should fix any of those issues that the neighbors are currently having. You can see the trees throughout, again, to just try to soften everything around. Lots of plantings and seeding in that main front plaza. And then in that northeast corner, again, some soft play and gathering area. And then the hardscape, which is off of the cafeteria area, kind of the middle east, which will include some basketball hoops, play apparatus, and I think four-square. Next. I don't know if you all want me to go through the floor plan at all, or if that is for a different meeting, but I'm happy to. Just either give me a thumbs up or a next, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure you'll have an opportunity in a different meeting, but you might want to just briefly point out kind of big picture what the layout is.
Sure, sure. So main entry, and I wish I could show on my pointer, yep, right through there, that kind of grayish area. So a secure, large vestibule, that was one of the big comments we were getting from their current school. The vestibules, about 100 square feet, so it makes it very difficult as they're checking people in. So this has a larger gathering area. Once they get buzzed in, from within there, there's a security counter that they can check in through. And then from there, if they get buzzed through, they can have access either into the admin suite, which is that olive-green square, or be directed beyond that. The library I mentioned is that kind of khaki color just south of the main entry. And then the gymnasiums and athletics are the orange at the south. This does allow us to completely close off the academic area, which is all north from any evening sporting events. That peach color immediately to the right of the library is the cafeteria slash commons. That not only acts as the cafeteria, but would also act as kind of your auditorium seating area with the stage shown in that light purple color. The rest of the purple is all the music classrooms and drama classrooms. And then a lot of back-up house, which is again, that kind of tan color between the orange and purple. So mechanical, electrical, also some big restrooms. From the main entry, moving north, the first classroom pod, which is a mix of two tones of green, that is our electives and also the special ed pod. And then the northernmost pod that has a mix of blues and pinks, that's one of our standard classroom pods. I think this one, the school is designated as their eighth-grade pod. So your typical classrooms in blue, science in pink, one special ed throughout each pod. And then that green rectangle in the middle is an open teaming studio for some group activities, group work, project-based learning. Each pod has their own restroom group, so they can all stay within that area, along with some central stairs that get you up to the second floor, which is a good segue to the next slide. For the second floor, it truly is just over top of those two classroom wings. The northernmost pod is basically a duplicate of what is right below, and this one is designated, I think, as seventh grade, and then the other pod is sixth grade. Again, your standard classrooms in blue, science in pink. Each has restrooms, teaming studios, teacher workrooms, and a special ed classroom. And then the, again, olive-green cluster to, yep, right there, that is a counseling suite right below where another flex classroom is in that other green color. There is nothing, there's no second floors above the library, commons, music and all of that, because those are just larger volumes to begin with, so. That's about it for that. The next sheet is the same elevations that Connor had already shown us. The next sheet is a materials board where we can show a little bit more. So we have three, excuse me, we have three different colors of brick. And then the upper-right wood look is actually our metal panel, so it'll have a graphic on it that makes it look more like wood, but is much more durable and long-lasting than an actual wood. And then the other, the green colors we have is a mix of some sun shading and some screening walls on the roof for the mechanical units. The three-dimensional wood GL1 is Uh the the three-dimensional wood GL one is what the um glue lamps and the. Uh roof decking above those big common areas will look like again to bring in some natural. Light, the far bottom right KW one is the um. The it's cow wall is a manufacturer, but it's a translucent panel at the gyms that is durable for ball impacts. It diffuses light um and um. Uh acts as kind of a window without having um glare issues, so. Um you know, I think the next two sheets, which we probably don't really need to review, are just the the photometrics. Uh the lighting photometrics of the site, which show that we have cutoffs, um so nothing shining. Into the neighbors or out onto the street, um but has the proper code-required coverage. Throughout all um egress paths and everything on the site, so. Um I think that's about it. I don't know if there's any questions from anybody.
Questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Jetcheck, uh I assume this has really good air conditioning. I'm not sure if uh the old school from nineteen seventy-three actually had AC.
Uh this will have very nice uh air conditioning and um much more efficient boilers. And heaters and every all all of all of the above. Uh this will be a very energy-efficient and uh very comfortable building.
I would like to go to this school.
Thank you, Audrey.
Other questions? Commissioner Bush?
Yes, uh. How many students will be attending the school? And is this considered a feeder school to uh Smokey Hill?
Yes, it is. Oh, go ahead, Audrey.
Go ahead with the Smokey Hill part.
Yes, it is a feeder to Smokey and uh Audra mentioned it a little bit, but with that master plan. Um if Smokey Hill does get replaced in the future, the hope would be that the location of that. Um could maybe push a little farther cl- to the south, closer to Laredo where a. Very central plaza could be designed uh for a much better connection between those schools. Without having to cross that very large parking lot, which can create danger going to those tennis courts and other activities uh. Down at Laredo as well.
That sounds great, planning for the future.
Um and then, sorry, your first question, uh students, I believe it's right around nine hundred, uh right, Audra, up to nine fifty. I think the school is maxing out at.
Yeah, so it's it's nine hundred. We do not plan on increasing the number of students. So we're planning on nine hundred students when school starts in the fall of twenty-seven. Um the building can actually hold. Uh a hundred and fifty thousand students, wait. Yes, sorry, that is not right. Nine hundred students, it I can't remember what the occupancy is, Reagan, I'm sorry.
I think it can get up to.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, twelve or fifteen hundred based on the size, but that would be really, I'll say bloated uh classroom sizes. So the the goal and with the way the neighborhood is trending, you know, it has not been a growing neighborhood, so um. It has plateaued out over the last handful of years, so uh they're they're hopeful that the. Club the student-to-teacher ratio can can remain a little smaller with this newer design.
And is there a uh escape uh route, you know, like that's now important where where it used to be. Not so important, but now it's a it's a big deal. I didn't see that necessarily in the uh in in the design.
An escape route, is that what you had said?
Right, yeah.
Um yes, there's uh we meet all of their required exiting for emergencies um and, you know, distributing throughout the building. You know, at least two ways out of each of those pods. I think we've actually provided three ways out of each of those pods um. Properly sized doors for the occupant loads and all of that as well.
And during.
Connected. Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, and during construction, CCSD is currently working on an escape eh escape plan. Just to avoid all the fencing uh just during construction, so.
Okay, but thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you very, very much for your presentation tonight. We appreciate that and we wish you well. Um on breaking ground, it sounds like it's an exciting endeavor. Um I know it'll be nice particularly for the residents there to have a new school for their youth. And hopefully that will continue to attract families to send their kids to a new middle school. All right, with with that, Brandon, is there any other instruction for us?
Uh thank you. Uh no, we have nothing else for the agenda, so um. We can adjourn or to your discretion.
All right, unless the chair has anything else, I would say let's go ahead and adjourn until six ten. Which is our regular meeting, Commissioner or Chair Walz.
Becky, did um did Mike have a chance to do an intro last meeting um that I missed or?
He did not, so I didn't know if he wanted to do that or if he would like to do that in the regular meeting. That's totally up to you.
Since we've got some time, let's do that here and then we'll keep the regular meeting a little bit tighter.
Mike Riley, you're on.
All right, so.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you were interested in being a commissioner. Um others than the joy of working with the.
I'm a relatively new resident here. Uh my wife and I bought a house here in the the reserve at Green Valley Ranch in forty-eighth uh two years ago. And I've been commuting back and forth from Northern Virginia where I work as a business developer for a uh IT program management firm. And uh I finally decided that I'd have spent more time out here with my wife and the grandkids than. Staying in Northern Virginia, so we sold that house last September. Uh we've been, again, we've been in this house here two years. Uh I've been very active or was very active in Prince Room County, Virginia, Northern Virginia, uh both on. Uh commissions uh related to the county um and and a lot of community involvement. I have been on the. The uh performing arts committee uh there, ballet committee, I've been involved with uh. Uh transportation committees, finance committees, school boards and things like that. And uh been involved with several other civic activities. Uh I retired from the Marine Corps in twenty-ten, became a contractor and. Uh I just felt that there was always something I could return to the community as far as uh what I could bring to bear. Uh I am a former town manager. Um I'm also a former congressional staffer. So I have a lot of background in both uh state, federal, and local um politics and planning and. Um things that relate to community involvement. So I came here, started uh getting involved with my community here. Uh it's a fifty-five-plus community. Uh I first became aware of what metro districts were. And I said, I need to learn more about that because we don't have metro districts in Virginia. And uh so I've gotten very, very involved to try and understand why Colorado does this. Um I've actually been engaged at the uh state legislative level uh with both the the city of Aurora and and Adams County. And in discussions in some of the town halls I've been to, uh Sunberg is my uh council member and then. The mayor is a marine like myself, so we we had an instant bond. But I I go to the town halls and I I listen to what people are talking about. I'm going, okay, so maybe there's something I could contribute. And so I I said, all right, I I've been looking at vacancies and and I saw this one come up. Um I had encouragement to to do so, I I applied and I went through the interview process and then I was told I had been selected. So I'm here now to contribute what I can. Um I had very good welcome aboard uh with Brandon and Stephanie. Uh learning about what the process here is. I am familiar with with the the conduct of meetings, although I'm. Uh I I'm usually under Roberts rules, I understand there's a different procedure here, and I've also talked to the uh the uh city attorney. Uh because I am on a community advisory committee with Second Creek Ranch Metro District, and so I am very conscious of any uh. Conflicts of interest that may occur. Uh I have already brought that up so that I do not expose myself. And so I will be very open. I will let you know what I'm engaged in, but yeah, I I'm I'm kind of excited about this. There are some things. Uh as Aurora continues to grow that that I had recommended to the council, uh such as um again, a uh a uh. Public, not a theater, but a performing arts center, maybe a semi-pro ball team. I know that there's a lot of work going near me at the airport with uh. The Aerotropolis, so I'm just looking at um how Aurora can continue to grow and to to be a. A fine city that people will be proud to call home. So that's what I'll bring to you.
Great, thank you very, very much for that introduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would say.
That's army, that's army.
Uh army, then we would say.
Yeah, th- thank you, there you go. I appreciate that as well.
Have to make that adjustment. Um commissioners, would you like to briefly introduce yourself to Mike? Just so that he knows a little bit about us. We'll start with Melvin.
Hi, Mike, we had a uh brief uh chat, you know, before the meeting start, but I've uh uh been on a number of boards. Uh and I really uh uh probably the boards that I appreciate most are the nonprofits. Uh like the the Ronald McDonald and and, you know, the uh so I uh just really uh. Appreciate you uh coming on and that's my uh brief uh background.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gaidser.
Yeah, I'm a former council member of the city and county of Broomfield. I have. Uh we, our family's done about a half billion dollars of real estate development in Colorado and Arizona. So I've dealt with uh six or seven counties and that many cities in development and planning zoning. I was also on uh a number of other committees, um including uh. Um. Uh housing and and development and so on. Thank you.
Chair Walz.
Commissioner Hogan, um Mike, very nice to meet you. Great to have you as a part of the commission. I think that you'll join our our little family here very well and and I look forward to your insight. Um each one of us here, I think, brings a very unique background and insight and is very plugged in to the Aurora and greater metro community. So I think that you're gonna add to that uh quite well. Uh speaking about being plugged in, I'm currently a president of the Havana Business Improvement District, as well as chair of the Business Advisory Board to City Council. And then have the pleasure of serving again as chair to Planning Commission. So I bring a about, I guess it's almost twenty years now, background in commercial real estate. Um on the landlord and tenant rep side, doing both of those and um. That those are just a few things that I contribute, I think, to the commission, so great to have you with us and look forward to meeting you in person one of these days.
Very good.
Commissioner Banka.
Welcome, Michael. Nice to have you on board. And um I'm Sunny Banka. I have um. Gosh, Ben, I'm a Realtor and I've been a Realtor in this area for forty-six years. So I get teased that I've been around longer than most of the streets have been in Aurora and and it's all true. Anyway, um I serve, I've served on several different task forces and boards and whatnot also. For the city, I currently also serve on the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee and um. Yeah, I anyway, excited to have you on board and um you're out in a growing area, lots going on.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jetcheck.
Hi, Mike, thanks for coming and thanks for your enthusiasm. Excuse me, it's nice to have somebody enthused about this committee. The last couple of people we've had on kind of just were were here. I've been a resident of Aurora for fifty years. My husband was stationed in the Army at Fitzsimmons uh back in the seventies. Um I worked in the medical industry for years and then I saw what was going on in Aurora and wanted to help. The businesses and just get the get the neighbors and the businesses together. So I've worked with the city and with Puma, the group that's working on Colfax right now, to form the Havana Business Improvement District. And then I've worked as the executive director for twelve years, retiring the first of January first of twenty-twenty. Right when the pandemic was kicking in, so I've been retired for five years now. But I'm still active with Planning Commission. I was on the Budget Committee with Melvin for many years. Uh before that, with Sunny, with Sunny too, so I've been involved a long time. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome again, Mike. My name is Becky Hogan and I'm vice chair of Planning Commission. Um retired land development consultant and helped people through the municipal entitlement process all over. So I bring that kind of background. Now, um I'm involved like Garrett and so many others on this board. Um in a number of different services. Um I am the treasurer of Koreatown. We are branding a place as a Koreatown here along the Havana corridor. And are really, really pleased with um our support and just being real champions. Of Asian businesses and minority businesses, frankly, as a whole. So um that, let's see, what else? Um I am engaged in construction of a Korean War Memorial right at General's Park. Which is at Colfax and Peoria and very, very excited about that. We're doing, you know, we're dotting our i's, pressing our t's. And looking forward to breaking round the end of September for that effort. Um let's see, also serve on the Consent Advisory Council. Which gives citizens' voices to the police monitoring that is going on in the city. Um so excited about that service and then I have the opportunity to help nominate judges. For Arapahoe County. Now I believe that you you may be in Adams County, but we have a big district in called the Eighteen Judicial. So help select judges there. So all of us stay very, very busy in multiple areas. Um and we're all frankly really committed and excited about our service to the city of Aurora. You've got a great staff to support. They have always been very responsive um to questions, concerns. That we don't know type of thing, so pleased to have you on board. Um Brendan, how long is Mike's term? Cause he is fulfilling someone else's.
I'm going with twenty-seven.
Okay, cool. Oh, cool. So um again, happy to have you here. Thank you, Chair Walz, for the opportunity to do this. And then we get like ten, fifteen minutes to chow down some food or whatever. Otherwise, we could be eaten late on some of the evenings. So we take a little break and we resume at six-ten. Um maybe a few minutes before get back on. You don't even have to leave the meeting. You just can shut off your camera, shut off your mic and. Um go about your business until we resume. Um Brendan or Stephanie will give an announcement that says, all right, folks. If you want to call in and speak, um and that's kind of our rally cry to get back in our chairs and be ready to resume the meeting.
Very good.
All right, great. Well, we will see you in a little bit, everybody.
Okay.